Good evening, everybody. I'm Ben Heckman. I'm the library director. I want to thank you for joining us online, for those folks. For those that are here in person, we want to welcome you back to the library. This is our first ever hybrid program, where we're trying to do this online and in person. So it's gonna be great. There's not gonna be any problems. The library is honored to partner with the Bexley Minority Parent Alliance, Bexley Diversity Equity and Inclusion, Bexley Pride, and the Bexley Special Education PTO to present tonight's candidate forum. Here at the library, we strongly believe civic engagement is key to a healthy and strong community. And we're happy to serve as a gathering place for neighbors to come together to listen, share, and learn. A quick note about safety tonight. Our in-person audience is masked up. And due to spacing, our candidates will remain masked throughout the program. And with that, I'd like to introduce and turn it over Brian Brewer with the Bexley Minority Parent Alliance, who will introduce our moderators and walk us through tonight's forum.
On behalf of our sponsors, which I think we talked about, I also want to recognize Art and Beth too, who are also part of our group, and just want to thank them. Just want to cover a couple ground rules for online individuals. Please use the chat function to submit your questions. And then, in the audience from there, fill out your cards from there. There'll be runners in the back. Just give those cards to them. The moderators will make all the decisions as far as the questions that we ask. Given the current environment, we want to model a positive and welcoming environment in Bexley. So it means that it'll be no cheering, booing, questions attacking, individual inappropriate comments. You'll give them a warning, and then second warnings will be asked away. So just we'll let you know that. Our process will be introduction of candidates for about 90 seconds to discuss themselves. And allow the moderators to ask questions for a remainder event. So a real quick introduction of our moderators, who I want to thank for being a part of this event. Both these individuals, I just met this year on Zoom. You know, so I was thinking, given the nature from there that, you know, some people know me, I was like, okay, I need to get somebody from other town from there. And so I kind of followed these guys, and I was like, hey, I know you don't really know that well, but you do this. And both of them said, let me know when and where. And I just want to thank both of them for being community servants in their, in their communities. And for also from there, both of them, you know, have been really strong people who have taken into a lot of things and consideration from there in the community. So first of all is Sam Schimpf from there, who is a technology specialist and member of the Worthy School Board. Again, they have a lot more stuff, and I'm just going to leave this real quick. And then Reverend Von Bell, who is pastor at Ryan Church of God and president of the Westernville School Board. And both of these individuals from there have done a heroic job. And all of a sudden, I've always now seen it as a fever about something or another. I just want to thank you for your community service.
Brian? Would it be possible for the speakers not to wear their masks when they're speaking? Because it mumbles it and it's very difficult to understand the words.
Well, we've been thanking you. One thing is that this will be taped, and we will do that. But because of the community standards and the standards of the Bexley Library and the city from there, we have asked them to do that. And plus, I do not want them also being on, because it will be taped. I do not want somebody saying, I cannot believe that they were unmasked during this session from there in a public space.
This muffled tonight is going to be muffled on the tape, you know, that's my concern.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much. All right.
Well, thank you all for being here this evening for this event. At this time, we want to give each of the candidates 90 seconds to make an opening statement. And so we'll start this evening with Remi.
Thank you so much, Reverend. I appreciate it. Sam, I think you might also for joining us. I appreciate that you have to come together tonight. And I'm honored to be here with these brave people who are with me this evening, Adam, Sam, and Remi. For years, I have been an integral part of our city's prosperity and progress. Elected to serve council president for two consecutive terms, something that has not happened in decades. I am the first to lead a majority female council. I am the first president in 100 years to lead a community through a pandemic. I have and will continue to protect our city, its businesses, and most important, its most vulnerable citizen from the struggles caused by COVID-19. Now more than ever, Bexley's stability that my leadership offers. I'm a community builder, and I've worked hard to keep our community connected. I'm a listener, and I've worked hard to be sure that my constituents see me out in the community and available to hear and address their needs. I'm an analyst, and I have worked hard to look at data and create solutions to challenges. I am a change maker, and I have worked hard to make positive updates such that Bexley will stay relevant far into the future, attracting strong economic development and a diverse population.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Monique Lampy, and I'm running for reelection to city council. I'm from a town in southern Texas, steps away from the US border. My parents were naturalized US citizens, were born and raised in Mexico. And I am a proud Hispanic American. I attended Stanford University and OSH Law, and I'm a litigation attorney. I'm also a very proud mom of two wonderful kids who have attended Bexley's public schools. I just launched my oldest to college four weeks ago, and my youngest attends Bexley High School. I mention my kids as I know that many of you have children as well. They are listening and watching us as our community has important conversations about social justice, sexual orientation, crime, the environment, police, gender identity and expression, COVID, and race. As your council member for the past four years, I have worked hard to foster an environment of honesty and consensus building. I've led your current council through two important votes on DEI initiatives and acknowledgements, and vote passed unanimously. There is more work to be done in our amazing community. And I look forward to our discussion tonight and hearing from you what's important so that I can share with you my platform. Thank you so much to our hosts and to our moderators.
Thank you very much. It's an absolute honor to be in front of you today. My name is Sam Marcelino, and I run for Bexley City Council. I was born in a suburb of Boston, and I moved to Bexley. Graduating from high school in 2005, I went to undergrad, where I met my wonderful wife, and then to law school. Currently, I'm a practicing attorney representing individuals throughout the state of Ohio. And I moved back to Bexley in 2016. Immediately upon moving back, I realized that I really wanted to get involved with the community and make sure I could make the most of my time here and make the most of this community. I was appointed to the Charter Review Commission, and I work with 14 other amazing individuals and revamping our charter for the next 10 years to come. That will be on the ballot this November as well. Please vote in favor of our hard work. On top of that, I've been appointed as the Complaint Liaison in the city of Bexley, fielding complaints about community, excuse me, city employees and any issues that somebody may have with them. I also currently serve in board directors for Wexner Heritage Village, as well as another private company called Clarity Medical Products. My goals in council are to drag Bexley forward, and I call it the three Cs. We have communication, community, and creation. Communication, I want to increase opportunities for the community to have input with city council and improve communication between city council and our residents. And so with these three Cs, I look forward to dragging Bexley forward. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Adam Sharp. As you know, I'm running for Bexley City Council. I'm, first of all, thrilled to be here, and I want to thank everyone for taking the time out of their days and other evenings while kind of in somewhere else. I think it really says a lot about the concern that you have for our city that you're here. And so I appreciate it, and I know all the other candidates appreciate it as well. I'm from Bexley, Ohio. I grew up here, went to Montrose, Bexley Middle School and High School. And then I went away, like most people do, to college. I graduated with a master's degree in male, and then I came back. Because to me, Bexley is home. I don't know if any of you have a place in your lives or a place that you really feel connected to in a very deep meaningful way. And for me, that place is Bexley, and so I came back. And I'm thrilled to be back, but I know that not everyone may feel the same way about Bexley as I did. Not everyone may feel that Bexley is home. And so we do have work to do to make Bexley feel like home for as many people as we can. So again, I am thrilled to be here, looking forward to answering the questions, and I was going to thank you all.
Thank you, everyone. I'd like to kick off the next question. This one is from the audience. Do you feel that city council gives ample opportunities for dialogue between council people and the Bexley population? What are those opportunities? And how would you work to increase chances for listening, discussion, and feedback? Let me just say it once again, since that's a long question. Do you feel that city council gives ample opportunities for dialogue between council people and the Bexley population? What are those opportunities? And how would you work to increase chances for listening, discussion, and feedback? We will start with Monique on this question, and we will go down the line.
Thank you so much, Sam. I know that over the past four years, I have made an effort to communicate clearly and most importantly, honestly, with all of our Bexley residents. I run into our residents in the grocery store, at the bank, they email me, they call me, they text me. And a lot of them are just looking for information or facts. And I ensure them that if I know the answer, I will share it with them. If I don't know the answer, I will get back to them with what that answer is. But I do know that many in our community feel that communication could be better. One of the things that I did last year was I revamped our city council agenda format. And the reason for that was to make sure that residents who wanted to attend our meetings and to speak out on important ordinances, especially the third meeting, which is typically when we would have a final vote, they wouldn't have to wait as long before voicing their opinion. I had known over the years, many residents who came to our meetings and sat there hours upon hours and then had to leave before the ordinance was discussed because they had a sitter at home and they couldn't sit, they couldn't stand there any longer. So I do think it's an area of opportunity for growth. I do know that the city tries to send out timely emails, special emails. But I would also encourage all of you to reach out to your individual council members so that we can respond as quickly as possible.
Thank you very much. Does city council give ample opportunities to citizens to communicate with them? I do not believe they do. I believe that at times they did, but I do not believe they currently do. I think that is proven by the fact that this is even a question at this point. As you noted from my introduction, the first point to my platform is communication. I want to increase opportunities for the community to communicate with us, to participate in the process. For example, it's my understanding that they used to have committee meetings and section meetings for where citizens could come in and ask questions and see how the process is developing. But due to potentially sunshine laws, they got rid of those meetings and opportunities. We need to find a workaround in some way to bring the community back into those meetings and give them additional opportunities to communicate with us outside of city council meetings. Not everybody can attend on Tuesday evening, so we need to make sure that we're giving everybody as many opportunities as we can. Not only do we need to give more opportunities, but we also need to encourage dialogue between the participants. We need that we have questions, and then hopefully getting answers at the same time, as opposed to more so statements being released. And so at this point, do we have ample opportunities? No. I do think city council currently works hard to hear from the community, but I think that there are more opportunities that we can give the community to communicate with us more efficiently. Thank you.
My response to this question would end a great deal upon what would be ample. I think in a certain sense, yes, insofar as citizens are free to go to the meetings to speak their mind. I know there have been efforts to streamline that process, to give everyone an opportunity, opportunity to speak. But I'm also well aware of the fact that many people cannot go, and this tends to be an issue that in many ways has a certain economic basis for it. If you don't have the means to get off work, or if you have, or you can't pay for a sitter, you're less likely to participate in our civic life, and that's a problem. Getting people in those situations to be more involved is going to be a challenge. I'm not going to sit here and say that, oh, it's going to be so crazy and we'll get it done in a week. It's not going to happen. It's going to be a struggle. But some of the things we need to do are make sure that the city is reaching out, that we are properly using our newsletter and communication tools. And really letting people know that we're going to answer these, we're going to answer your responses in a timely manner. And we're going to give real responses. We are not going to, you know, say, well, thank you. We appreciate your concern. Have a nice day. Those aren't answers. And so for me, the answer to this overall question is yes and no. In a certain sense, we are doing an ample job, but there's still more to be done.
I'm really glad that this question came up because there's been a lot about it on social media. And a lot of looks on social media is not correct. Under my leadership, I have made sure that the public can come to share comments and ask questions. That's why we instituted a reasonable time limit on public comment so that more community members have time to share their thoughts. Citizens can talk for five minutes at the beginning of the meeting. They can speak for five minutes at the end of the meeting. And they can speak for five minutes at every single ordinance. At our last meeting, we had 12 times for an individual to speak if he wanted to. That's 12 times five. I'm doing my math. That's 60 minutes. That's opportunity for individuals to speak to us. Citizens do speak. They do ask questions, and the questions are answered. If the answers to the questions are a little too involved, the appropriate person gets back to the citizen after the meeting. I want to be clear. I enjoy hearing from citizens, both in the community and in council meetings. That's why you see me out and about in our community, interacting with my constituents. That resident interaction is the reason I have been on council for the past eight years and why I want to continue my great work for the next four.
Thank you. Our next question deals with the topic of policing and police reform. Policing, racial profiling, and police reform have been issues of great interest in multiple recent Bexley state actions. What is your position on police reform in Bexley? And what actions should we expect to see from you in that year?
Thanks very much. Policing in Bexley is a really hard thing because we all value safety, and it's probably the most important thing to us. But we all also want them to be part of the community. So as a member of city council, I hope to improve our community policing initiatives. I've met with the chief of police, I've spoken with the chief of police, and I think we are coming up with a couple of solutions that may help improve the relations between our police force as well as the community. This might include a minor interaction policy, where we essentially help the police and guide them as to how they should be interacting with our children and families. Additionally, I wouldn't mind seeing a program where police officers are able to go to the school and educate our children as to how they became police officers. It all starts very small. It takes that first step. We can't just do it all at once, but we have to build that trust back up. I've been profiled. It's the worst feeling that you can possibly imagine. You feel trapped, essentially. And I don't want anybody to feel trapped in their own community. So we clearly need to do something to make sure we're addressing this. When I was in Bexley, you know, it was in high school, we had a strong relationship with the police, I think. And I want to get back to that because really what we need is them to be a part of our community so we can continue on this great relationship while keeping everybody safe. So, thank you.
So I know that the city website has a lot of reports and statistics that you can look through. And one of the things that came out from the data regarding policing in Bexley, these to my mind, was that the number of citation warnings were not very balanced. Many of our citation warnings are issues where someone was pulled over and a ticket was not given. There did seem to be a, in my opinion, evidence of racial bias and stuff in some way. So we do need to acknowledge that there are certain, you know, there are problems that we have to address. At the same time, we also have to balance that with the fact that one of the main things I've heard on the campaign trail or the main complaints is that people are speeding and going way too fast, and we don't have enough police to really enforce our speeding along the main arteries of Bexley. We also need to balance these concerns with the fact that Bexley has really outstanding response times when we call up police. They are very, very prompt. So the solution to this seems to be that we need better training, more training, and more processes that are standardized. So when police officers are pulling people over, why is it in certain situations that some people get warnings, and in certain situations, other people are tipped? We need to remove some of that gray area and have standardized policies so that we can help take out situations in which police officers may not be actively trying to do the wrong thing, but over a period of time, you can see that there are some negative effects of interactions.
Under my leadership as president of council, policing is far better off than it was four years ago. We have reformed the way officers do traffic stops. Our department is in compliance with the can't wait. While President Bexley voted to establish a citizen review invite reward, and we were the first in central Ohio to do that. Bexley has actively increased the number of minority police officers. The faces of our office police officers look different than they did four years ago. While progress, we still have a ways to go. I was instrumental in creating and participating in police citizens' listening sessions. I believe in listening, analyzing, and then changing. We are, we are looking into being a part of Project Taillight, joining Columbus State and Franklin County. We have put in our budget a mobile ticketing car that sends tickets to speeding motorists without a police officer involved. I recognize that change does not happen overnight, but we, we are working in this area. We are trying to be a progressive city, which is acknowledgement that we are not there yet, but we are moving forward towards better things.
As many of you know, police crime, unfortunately, has been on the rise. And it's not just here in Bexley. It's in Columbus. It's national. What used to happen only at night now happens during the day, happens in the driveway, happens virtually all around us. And I would ask all the residents who are watching here tonight to do what you can to perhaps not have the crime of opportunity happen to you. It makes not only our police jobs easier, but it also protects you, our residents. I've done many police ride-alongs. I've graduated from the Bexley Citizens Policipality. I've talked with our police officers. I've seen police officers walking a senior citizen back to her home after she had mental problems and she didn't know where she came from. My kids had an emergency. They called 911. That officer was in my house before I pulled them to my own driveway. We need our police officer, but that doesn't mean that I don't agree that we need some police reform. Over the past several months, I think we've seen an increase in public records requests. And I would love to make sure that we have appropriate staffing in our city and at the police department to kindly provide residents with the information that they are asking for. I think that would be a great way to start. I will also acknowledge that there are many families in Bexley who have different conversations than other families who are not minorities. That's a reality, and that needs to get better. I want to be part of that change. But I also know that the police want to move the needle forward. They want to get there with us, with all members of our community. And I hope that I can be part of that move forward.
Thank you very much. Switching gears a little bit, the next question will be about affordable housing and housing access. Housing issues around affordable housing and environmental concerns regarding the Ferndale-Mayfield area are ongoing in Bexley. What are your position on housing issues and affordable housing? And we'll start with Adam. We'll start with Adam.
Okay, thank you. Sorry about that. Yeah, so one of the main things that my campaign is trying to do is to change some of our zoning laws regarding in-law suites. One of the things that I've taken away from this pandemic, and I think a lot of other people have taken away, is that we enjoy, especially working from home, being close to our families. And our current zone only allows for in-law suites above the 800 square feet, which is quite small. It makes it difficult for families to come together, especially if people have older parents who may, for whatever reason, not have the means to otherwise live in Bexley. It may not be feasible for them to get here. So one of the things I would like to do is to expand the square footage that we can allow for in-law suites. Like I said, it's currently capped at 800. I'd like to see that at least raised to 1200. And so that's a step in the right direction with regard to affordable housing. I know that there has been talk about some of the projects on Livingston, and those have been somewhat controversial, not necessarily for the project themselves, but for the way residents feel that they weren't necessarily involved in the process. And so when, if we do go forward, if we decide as a city that we would like to make greater steps with regard to affordable housing, we need to make sure that everyone is on the same page, and especially that the residents are going to be most impacted by those changes on our board and are happy to be a part of the solution.
Housing is a problem, and will no doubt become a bigger one. The Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission predicts that our population, central Ohio, will be 3 million by the year 2050. What are we going to do for that with those extra half million people? We are a landlocked city with few opportunities to build inclusive housing, so we need to be creative. I am proud of my work to write, introduce, and lead the charge for passage of legislation which amplified Bexley's fair housing law with an amendment forbidding discrimination based on status of income. My legislation became the first in central Ohio, the sixth in the state, and has spurred five more cities to join with similar legislative. Next week, you can listen in as the Columbus Metropolitan Club addresses this issue. As chair of Move to Prosper and a champion of SOI legislation, I have been asked to be on that panel. I will continue to support both politically and through legislation and funding the CIC's pursuit to re-envision Ferndale-Mayfield and having a mixed-use development that includes inclusive housing.
When I first joined council, Ferndale-Mayfield was an area of Bexley that needed much love and had been overlooked for decades. It had been an unlicensed landfill for longer than we can imagine. One of the first things that I did on council was to vote for funding to have environmental testing so that we truly would know what was underneath the surface, given that many residents and families lived there. And what they found was really disturbing. Our experts told us that if you dig just a few inches into the ground at Ferndale-Mayfield, you'll find decades of old diapers and God knows what else. Those are not adequate living conditions. Those are not adequate living conditions. Luckily, I think that our current council acted well when they unanimously amended the city's strategic plan to improve and afford housing as one of its key goals. And I was happy to lead that charge to make that initiative. I was also proud to support President Fidel's new ordinance prohibiting rental source of income discrimination. And I've also talked to a lot of seniors and single families who can no longer afford to live in Bexley, to buy in Bexley, or to otherwise survive here. I look forward to following up on the city's strategic plan to make sure that all of them want to live here, play here, and retire here and do that.
I think that the current city council has actually done a lot to promote affordable housing in Bexley, and I commend them for their work on those initiatives. When I first moved back to Columbus, I became involved with the group called Home Board. I volunteered with them, which essentially provides quality, safe housing for families of lower income background. Thus, I'm in favor of affordable housing done correctly. Our community benefits from a diverse socioeconomic background of residents. And you know, I'm just thinking back to when we moved to Bexley. And I'm not sure that my family could have afforded to live in Bexley in today's world if we would have moved here just now. But I've benefited greatly from the opportunities that Bexley has provided me. So if we can continue to provide those types of opportunities to families around Columbus and throughout the country, and they want to move here, and move here from Boston, I think that's a very good thing. That all being said, we just got to make sure that it's done correctly and safely. And so as we work to rid ourselves of that stereotype of the Bexley bubble, I think we should start to look at the housing situation here in Bexley and try to find continued ways to improve affordable housing in Bexley and continue to develop and build upon these initiatives in an effective manner. Thank you.
Okay, our next question. If you are elected, how will you increase support and services for our senior and elder communities?
That's a great question. We have been looking into places within our community where we can have a designated area for our seniors. And I just mentioned that in the year 2040, we're going to be up to 3 million people. Most of them will be 65 years and older. There are some super exciting grants and opportunities for grants out there that help with senior transportation to and from grocery stores. I am on the board of Jewish Family Services, and that is something that we as a city could partner with them to make some of that happen. We are constantly booking, Michael Price and Recreation Department, for a site that the seniors can call their own. And we even have $20,000 in our budget to work on investigating those specific areas. And I believe that with potentially a grant from the Bexley Community Foundation, we could make that happen in the near future.
I think there's a lot of different ways that we can support our seniors. For the past four years, I have been a regular attendee at the Bexley, have two monthly meetings. I'm not the only council member that is there. But for me, it's an opportunity to sit and talk and really hear what is important to our seniors. They know that I support them, their leadership. After all, they are Bexley's biggest cheerleaders. If you look around at every community event, it's the seniors that are mostly volunteering, passing things out, keeping our city running as well as it should. There is a wonderful volunteer list that I would have to put anyone on who would like to. And from time to time, you have seniors who need help shoveling snow, writing their leaves, doing some hard work, a trip to the grocery store. Especially during COVID, that volunteer list got magnified because our seniors really need help. I would love to explore not only a senior gathering place, but I would also love to combine intergenerations in Bexley so that granddaughters and grandchildren are interacting with their grandparents at community events. I've also tried to engage our seniors and partnered with them on senior educational activities around Bexley. A few months ago, I hosted a senior spam conversation when I knew that our seniors in Bexley were being targeted for false identification and unemployment fraud. And it was a big success. So I think there's different ways that not only our civic groups here in Bexley can help our seniors, but I would also love different families to support those, our seniors as well.
What does a 34-year-old know about our aging population and how to provide elder care? In 2014, I lost my mother. And in this past July, I lost my father. Both of them were aging and had health issues. And we had little to no resources really available to us because they had just enough to where they couldn't really ask the government for more assistance and not really enough to fully provide for themselves. And so I was kind of at a loss myself. And so this has actually been a big part of my platform here, is providing these types of opportunities to our community itself. I work on the Wexner Heritage Village with, I'm sorry, I'm on the board of Wexner Heritage Village. And I'm hoping that we can find a way to partner with that type of organization to provide resources for our aging population. I want to bolster the current work that's been done so far. There's actually a program that Bexley initiated right before COVID. And unfortunately, that really took the wind out of its sails. But I do think that there are the basic outlines of a strong plan there that we can build upon. I know there's a discussion surrounding Central Community Center. I think that would be an excellent way to start this. Perhaps we could use that to bring about continuing education programs and other ways for our senior population to stay engaged in the community. Moreover, we could have things such as WILs clinics and things of that nature for families without those types of documents, from attorneys, perhaps volunteering. And finally, I think there should be a care consultant for the community that can help families not only here, but perhaps out of town, to give them advice as to where they can find certain types of care for their loved ones.
Yeah, I don't want to repeat too much of what I said about in-law suites. I do think this is something else where in-law suites have the potential to give a benefit to our senior community and to really foster a generational sense of openness for many families. I've heard a lot of talk about the senior center and whether or not Bexley should build on, whether we can build on, where would it go? But I do believe that our seniors deserve at least some designated space, space with resources that are available to them. And I know that space and property is at a premium in Bexley. I do know we were able to recently renovate Jeffrey Mansion. And if there's no longer enough space now, perhaps we could look into renovating that further and giving our seniors a centralized location where they can go for resources and they can find things that they need. I mean, we've heard a lot of community brief responses so far on this panel about that. One other thing I'd like to add though is I think that we should have in some capacity in the city, a email list serve type thing. We've done it for the pandemic where people need their driveway cleaned or something like that, that people can volunteer. And I think that's something that even after COVID is in the near future that we should keep that up and really try to get, you know, I think it'd be great to have some young kids, some high school kids helping out and getting a chance to give some of our elderly population.
Thank you very much. I just want to take a moment to remind everyone in the audience to please submit your questions, whether you are at the library or you are online. You can submit them on Facebook and you will get the questions. So please let the questions keep rolling. But the next question that we have from the audience is one that can make a tone for both Vod and I as school board. School boards and city councils represent key elements of our community. So the question that is posed to the four of you is, how can Bexley City Council and the Bexley City School Board collaborate more? And we will start with Moon.
For the past couple of months, I have actually been working quite closely with our school board. And I really wish that I had started sooner. So I've been on council for four years. And that work that I've done with the school has arisen in the past couple of months. I've had an opportunity now to volunteer and interview our candidates for school superintendents. And I did that as a community leader, and I had a chance to vet them for others. I also had a chance to sit on a school interview team to select the new Montrose principal. And if you haven't met her, she is fantastic. I've also had a chance to now, for many months, be part of a school committee that has worked with the Bexley Little School to help them figure out how to spend grant dollars that they have received to increase diversity amongst their staff and their teachers. For those of you who don't know, the Bexley Little School System Principal, Nicole Armstrong, she is a firefighter and she likes to get things done. She put together with others a very comprehensive grant and was awarded that money. So I have been working with her and other community members who I see in this room to try to entice teachers and staff from other districts or other states to give our Bexley schools a look so that we not only increase our diversity, but also diversify the teaching experiences that they would bring to our students. I also do regularly meet with different members of the Board of Education, and I will continue to do that.
That's a good question. How can Bexley City Council collaborate more with the school board? And I think that we have to understand that there really is a separation of powers there and one that we really need to be cognizant about. Due to the fact that that's not my expertise. I'm not running for school board because I just don't know all the ins and outs of the school system. So I think the biggest thing that we can do as city council members is simply listen. And this takes us back to communication. This takes us back to the fact that we need to be listening to our constituents and making sure that they can voice their concerns because we may have a strong relationship with the school board to where we can pass along those concerns and they can develop on those issues itself. You know, I think a lot of people moved to Bexley at one time or another for the school system to provide for their families. So clearly, it's one of the most important things that we have in this community. We need to make sure that we keep it moving forward. And so however we can help improve that, I think it's going to come from mainly listening to citizens and relaying that information to the school board and hoping that we can aid their efforts in any way that they tell us that we can. I also mentioned earlier potentially improving on community policing by working with the police department to have an officer go to the school and provide their path to their career. And that would just be another thing that would kind of circle back into the community policing and strengthen that bond between the police and our community. So again, communication and making sure that we just listen to the residents and the school board as a whole.
Yeah, so I do believe that the school board and city council are generally in their respective silos. And there's probably not enough collaboration between the two. In terms of what we can do about that, I think we should explore having official non-villain representatives on each board. I know a lot of organizations have that where there'll be a designated from city council who has to be or should be at school board meetings and vice versa. And that way, we can each have representative at each place that's relaying information back and forth to us. We don't have to worry about hearing it through a third party. I think that'd probably be the most efficient way of going about it.
I would argue that in the eight years that I've been on council, city council and the Board of Education have had an amazing, amazing relationship. As President of Council, I sit down quarterly with the police department, with the mayor, with the rec. department head, with the head of the Board of Education. And we have conversations about how we can work together to better our community. For example, during COVID, we had a joint COVID task force and sitting on that were members of city council, were members of the school board. And we had amazing conversations about what was happening in the schools, what was happening in the cities, how could we work together as a community to make a difference for everyone? We sit at those round tables and it's an opportunity for us to hear from the schools. What do they need as far as safety? We know as a community, our schools and our safety is what keeps people wanting to stay and keeps people coming to our community. So we also worked with the CARES Act funding. I was on the committee. And we worked very hard with DARM to help some of the students who are most in need at Bexley School.
Thank you. Our next question. How will you facilitate development to broaden Bexley's tax base?
To facilitate and broaden the tax base here in Bexley is somewhat challenging because we're a landlocked city. You can't go just bring in a corporation to build a big warehouse here, bringing a bunch of tax money because you don't know where it would go unless you want to get rid of something else that we have. So it's kind of a, you know, property and land to do that is diminishing asset. But that being said, I do think that we can continue to develop Main Street as well as some of our other underutilized areas. Main Street specifically is part of the reason why I think a lot of younger families move back to Bexley because it's vibrant, it's thriving, there are businesses, there are things that draw you to there, whether that be a restaurant or perhaps now a music studio or a pet shop. So if we can continue to almost bring in those types of businesses and to bring in more of a commercial tax base, that would be excellent. Otherwise, nobody wants their taxes to be raised, obviously, if they can at all avoid it. And so I think we just have to try to be as creative as we can. And I'm going to be very honest with you, I may not be that specialist, but I can tell you that if anybody has any ideas, I'm certainly willing to listen. And that's what I ask for you as citizens and as people that are, will be my constituents hopefully after November, is that you will come to me with these ideas so I can build upon those and say, and put those things into action. Because we all have to accept our limitations to an extent. And this certainly would be one of mine in a landlocked city. So please, any other suggestions, I'm willing to listen. Thank you.
So I'm generally not in favor of special tax incentives or rebates. But for the purpose of expanding our tax base, it might be worthwhile to explore that when we have new commercial buildings going up on Main Street, there's a few areas where it's still maybe to develop and we offer some sort of tax break for buildings that have apartments in the upper floors. That way, we can bring more residents into Bexley and collect a bit more revenue. I think it's something we need to consider, especially as we all know we are a landlocked place. It's going to be hard to bring a lot more people in. Really going to have to be creative in squeezing out any places where people can live. So I think we do need to consider promoting more and more of that to use commercial residential type development models.
If you come to city council, you will hear me on the regular brag about our volunteers. We have, not only do we have amazing people willing to give up their time, but these are people who have amazing ideas and who are incredibly connected. And our CIC is one such group. They are a dynamic group of people who know how to bring business to Bexley, how to think and rethink real estate, and know how to develop areas. And they're working very hard at doing some of that, and they are the experts. They're the ones that we are going to have to rely on. But at the same time, there is no reason why we can't try very hard, just like we are trying so hard to keep our community vibrant such that individuals want to live here. We've got to make sure that businesses also want to come and make their hats in our community. The Main Street TIP has been amazingly successful. The Main Street TIP has been amazingly successful. And our abatement of the gateway has also brought in so much more money than had it remained a funeral home. So those are definitely ideas that we should always keep, tools that we should use when we need.
I will be honest with you. I think in a city that is landlocked like Bexley, it can be hard to think about ways to broaden and increase our tax base. One of the things that I would readily suggest that we keep doing and that I've done for the past four years is to watch the city expenses in case we can't increase our revenue. I'm so proud of our city finances. Our, our city auditor was here a few minutes ago. I think I saw him somewhere. But I will share with you that at the end of July twenty twenty one, the city of Bexley was almost nine hundred thousand over projected revenue. And that's during a pandemic. That is pretty darn tough. I like to think of myself as a good steward of your tax paid dollars. So if we can't find quick, easy ways to broaden our tax base once it shows to bring in our expenses. I sit on the CIC. I sit with those experts that work expansion. And while I don't have a background in real estate, I share with them that at times I see too many empty store funds in Bexley. While Main Street has never looked better or worth thriving as much, there are still some storefronts that are sitting empty. And for me, that's a lost opportunity. Not only would I want to revitalize Livingston, I would also want to focus on orthacity and make sure that those become thriving commercial districts. About a year or so ago, I approved three metal schoolhouse moving to Bexley on orthacity. It's a preschool and daycare, a much needed necessity for our working parents. And I'll continue to look for opportunities to bring new businesses to Bexley. I know a lot of folks differ on what they'd like. Hopefully you'll let me know what you'd like us to bring to Bexley.
Thank you very much. Uh, I'd like to circle back uh to police reform uh since all, all four of you have mentioned, mentioned that at some point. So the question is, can you please elaborate on specific reforms you would like to see regarding police reform? And we will start with Adam.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to go back to the, the example I gave earlier about the variance in uh citations issued versus citations not being issued when they could have been issued. Um, and when I was reviewing um that, that document on Bexley's website, I, I saw a noticeable disparity in how tickets were waived versus when they were issued. And so um, we really do need to standardize our practices and remove some of the gray area from uh our police force. This may mean that some of us get more tickets and that's going to be unfortunate, but if we get more tickets, it's probably because we were speeding, rolling through one of our stop signs or doing something else like that that we really shouldn't be doing anyway. Uh, so I think we need to have standardized practices. Uh, I think you can always try to increase training. Uh, there is a point at which I think you see diminishing returns. So I think we need to really look into the best training practices that are available and see what's been most effective in other police departments across the country. Uh, in the past couple of years, I think we've probably seen governments across the country using a myriad of different um options to try to reform their police department. And I think we can benefit from some of those successes and even from some of those failures uh to try to, to see what, what's working and what's not.
As our city cannot prosper if individuals do not feel safe on our streets and in their homes, I will continue to support our police with the resources and training to be certain our department is a model for other communities. By resources, I don't just mean gear. I mean, training, training of all sorts. And, and our police officers are getting that kind of training and they are models for a lot of other communities. I mentioned earlier uh Project Tailgate and indeed that is something that um Columbia State is partnering, partnering with, with uh with Franklin County. And it, it, it's a situation where if someone is pulled over initially because their taillight is out, they're not going to get a ticket because their taillight is out. They will be referred to, assuming that everything else is okay. Uh, and they will be referred to a place that will be able to give them either a free tailgate or help them, help getting one. I believe there's a lot of, of potential with our youth interaction with, with children, uh, yeah, with the police. Um, I, I love uh that Chappy, Officer Chapman, um does crossing with, with the cop. And he also has um teaches kids how to uh save bike tips. Um, the police are now passing out bike lights to kids that bleed them. Um, and we are also working very hard with our youth interaction policy working group. And I am looking forward to finding out what they have in this arena as far as things that we can do to help bond our youth with our police officers.
I have a, a few thoughts on some police reform that I think would, would be important for our residents to consider. Um, one of the things I mentioned a few minutes ago was I would support making sure that every public records request that's made to our police department, to our city is sufficiently staffed so that our residents get a timely response after a thorough review of their records request. I would also um encourage everyone, if you haven't already, put onto our Bexley Mayor's Court every other Thursday, one P M. Bexley's Mayor's Court is incredibly unique. We are, I believe, the only mayor's court in central Ohio that has an appointed public defender who's also a Bexley resident. So if you are a defendant in our mayor's court, you don't have the means to pay for an attorney, Bexley provides one for you. We also have been working with the clerk of courts and the prosecutor and the public defender and the magistrate to roll out a fine-free system such that if you do have a fine that needs to get paid and you're unable to pay it, uh, you can repay that fine with community service so that those who don't have the means can truly um still prosper with their lives. In the ballot, um considerations are going to be on the, the charter ballot in the fall, the upcoming fall, there's five of them. One of the languages in there speaks to mayor's court being required to ensure the least restrictive needs for defendants to appear. That would really help in going forward with police reform for our indigent residents and indie visitors who for whatever reason need to appear for mayor's court. And finally, one last thing I'd encourage everyone to do is to take a look at policy three forty-two Bexley Police Department manual. It's got a lot of um specificity with how our police department interacts with the community on their community policing model.
Specific reforms, um, are, are, there's a lot of them that you can choose from. You've heard about a couple of them so far tonight, whether it be A Can't Wait, Project Taillight, uh, Bexley's Mayor's Court having a public defender, uh, the, the, the fine-free system. And, and you know, I think the, the shocking thing is to many people is that those things currently exist because of the work that I think the city council and uh, and uh, and, and the police department have done together. Um, and that's part of the problem that I think we have is that we have no real relationship. Um, potentially, or we have a strained relationship with the police, whether it's real or just um a, a feeling of the community. Um, it, it exists in many people's homes. And so I think we need to start from square one, uh, like I discussed. Uh, there's mention of Officer Chapman. I have had the best story of Officer Chapman when I worked at Donato's on Main Street and then the Southwest Girl Officer Chapman would come into Donato's MOs and say, Sam, how are you doing? What are you doing? What are you studying? Uh, where are you going to school? Those types of things. Those types of positive interactions allowed me to trust in the police and what they were doing and maybe seek out the resources that were actually there for me or for others in the community. So I really think that we can name all of the different types of reforms that we would like to see in the community. And I think Bexley's actually trying to do some of them. But the biggest thing is that we need to start back at square one and build on that relationship with the police force. Because really, until we do that, there's no way to communicate the benefits that do exist here in Bexley for us. Thank you.
Our next question, what are some things that Bexley can do to become a more inclusive community?
Under my leadership as council president, our city has worked hard to become a leader in DEI initiatives that hopefully embrace diversity in such a way that all people feel safe, welcome and valued. Council amended the strategic plan to include DEI goals. The faces of city hall and the police department are more diverse than they were four years ago. Diverse employee hires is just one of our goals and we will continue that goal. I set up and council participated in an eight-hour training on DEI with a nationally sought-after expert in the field. Training of staff and elected officials is yet another of the many goals. I am most proud of my work to write, to introduce and lead the charge for passage of legislation which amplified Bexley's Fair Housing Law with an amendment forbidding discrimination based on fourth. Under my leadership, the council approved the first citizen review board in central Ohio and a system was set up to invite citizens and unbiased advocates free of charge to help them navigate the review board system should they want to file complaints against a city employee. There is so much more we can do and that is why we say that we are a progressive city. Not because we're there, but because we're on a journey trying to be better.
I think Bexley's made some great strides over the past um two years regarding DEI. Um, I personally have done uh as much as I can and I know that I want to do more regarding those issues. A few things that I've done last fall, I put together a educational event for our community entitled Racism in the Criminal Justice System. I asked um Bexley resident, Monika Williams, to co-host it. It was well-attended and I think it really did a great job of educating our residents on the different steps that racism can enter into our criminal justice system. I also attended a wonderful educational event put together by another council member on the Tulsa Master. For those of you who may not know, back in nineteen twenty-two in Tulsa, Oklahoma, thirty-five blocks of black-owned homes and businesses were destroyed and residents were killed. It was one of the worst incidents of racism in our country. I also attended a very successful gym team celebration that occurred a few months ago and I look forward to the next one. I also helped put together a community reflection that took place in Jekyll Meadow days after George Ford's murder. I also introduced a resolution to amend our city's strategic plan with important DEI initiatives. And that, that pan, plan passed seven zero. I also helped organize the Pride Cross Talk. Many of you may have noticed that as you were walking in here, the crosswalk is painted rainbow. Um, and I was proud to partner with Bexley Pride to do that on the last day for Pride Month. And finally, if you haven't already been in mayor's court, I would encourage you to go, anyone can attend. And I think it will give you a great insight into the ways that Bexley is trying to be as inclusive as possible.
When I left Bexley for college, I, I really never intended on coming back. It was a, it seemed like a closed uh community where people were set in their ways, um, and, and they weren't really open to change. I can tell you that as I would come back to visit uh during college and law school, I, I saw Bexley changing. I saw it progressing. I saw new families moving in that looked different than the ones that uh lived here in two thousand and one when I moved here. I saw uh new viewpoints, uh, you know, being, being discussed. And it was really encouraging, which is why I really wanted to get involved with community reform. Um, specifically, I have now worked on the Charter Reboot Commission where we uh made many strides to improve the charter to reflect our community as it currently stands in regards to the gender neutral uh pronouns that uh are, are up for vote this November, as well as uh making a statement about Bexley's uh troubled past and acknowledging that it has no place here uh now or anytime in the future. Uh, and so I'm encouraged by that work because it seems as though Bexley really does have their eye on this uh progress. Moreover, I do serve as a complaint liaison to hopefully assist those that do have complaints against city officials. Um, so yeah, I should say employees, excuse me, um, and help them navigate that process. So I think Bexley is striving to uh improve their uh DEI, I would say it in general, work um to make it more inclusive. Uh, but the biggest thing that we can do is really give them a voice and give all these groups a voice and make sure that we're uh, we're hearing from them. Because it's easy to try and project what we think uh these groups may want. But really, if we just sit down and listen to them, we can really come to uh some great conclusions and do some great work. So uh, hopefully we can continue on with that. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I think one of the ways that, uh, one of the, one of the proposals I had in my campaign, I, I would hope is a way in which we can make Bexley more inclusive and I need to establish term limits for all elected officials. And my rationale behind that is that it's, it's difficult to run for public office. Um, it's difficult to put yourself out there to, to challenge and confront. It can serve as a hindrance, a blocking of opportunity to people who might otherwise uh want to run for public office. And I think that giving more, having more contested elections, you will have a more diverse range of candidates and which you can choose. Uh, and, and so that's, that's one thing that I'm, I'm really passionate about in terms of, you know, getting some changes to happen. And that means that, you know, if I'm elected, I'm putting a limit on what I can do. But that's what, you know, it needs to happen, these sorts of changes to take place. Um, so I, I'm very passionate about uh time limits. And I, I think that when we talk about diversity and anti-inclusivity, again, we tend to ignore economics. Um, and that is a real determining factor in a lot of our lives with regard to who we interact with, how we interact, the people we invite into our homes. They all tend to be about the same class of people. So we need to work to make Bexley more economically diverse and that's going to be really challenging. It's, as I mentioned before, um. You know, I, I do improve more options for low-income housing, um, but this has to be done in a way that is respectful of the residents nearby where this happens.
Thank you very much. Uh, masks have been an issue for the past uh year and a half during the pandemic. So I think there's many in the community who'd like to ask directly, what is your position on the current mask mandate? And do you feel it should be modified? Uh, we'll start with Nune.
I do support um the current mask mandate. I supported the prior one. I also encourage all of our residents, uh, my neighbors to get vaccinated if they're able. I do feel that the current mask mandate uh does give sufficient exceptions for individuals who have medical or major health issues such that they can't wear a mask. I also realize that not everyone can get vaccinated and I appreciate that. I would encourage all of you, if you can, get vaccinated or a mask. Um, that's, that's all I have to say about that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I, I support the mask mandate. Uh, you know, you don't know what people are, are dealing with at home. You don't know who's at home um, and who they're trying to take care of and protect from this. And so while I understand everybody's individual rights, um, I, I value the, the health and safety of others a bit more. Um, and so I, I support the mask mandate as it is, as it was. Um, trying to keep my father, my elderly father, safe from the virus is probably the scariest thing that I had to do um, over the past couple of years. And uh, we did it thanks to, I think, we're being a community that supported uh the mask mandate when it existed previously. And uh, and I hope we continue to keep that work to keep everybody safe because I, I want to continue to see it basis.
Yeah, so I, I would like to start by saying, you know, if you haven't got vaccinated or are able to, I would strongly encourage you to get vaccinated uh with regards to the mask mandates. Uh, yes, I su-, I support them, but I'm not always happy about it because I realize there's some inconsistencies in how we apply them. Insofar as you can go to a restaurant and eat and everyone's eating so they're not wearing masks. And it's a bit hard to rationalize how that's different than sitting in a room with you all for a few hours and we're all wearing masks. So I, I do support the mask mandate, uh, but I realize that it is inconsistent and that it, um, you know, it may not always be the most logically, um, logically consistent policy that we have. At the same time, I'm going to err on the side of caution and safety. Um, so yes, I definitely support the mask mandate. I'm not always worried about it. Um, so yes, I definitely support the mask mandate. I'm not always worried about it.
One of my biggest heroes is Fred Rogers. And Fred Rogers will tell you that there are three ways to success. The first one is kindness. The second one is kindness. And the third one, you know it, is kindness. So I have three things to say, wear your mask, wear your mask, wear your mask.
Okay, our next question, what do you see as the greatest challenge facing the city of Bexley? And how will you address it? What do you see as the greatest challenge facing the city of Bexley? And how would you address it? And we'll start with Simone.
There are numerous challenges, and and each day I think we're thrown a different one. But the greatest challenge um that we that we have currently, I think, is um is keeping Bexley a place that we're proud to live in, um a place that our children are proud to move back to, um keeping it a community where we care for each other, um where we value education and value diversity and inclusion. Uh, you know, there's, there's a couple of different things that we can discuss them um by improving uh community policing. Um, that's one major thing, just making sure that we're keeping everybody safe and we're listening to all the viewpoints to make sure it's done correctly. Um, we can also just make sure that there are support groups, again, like we've mentioned previously, for our aging population. Uh, you know, we still, I know that a lot of focus is put on the schools and and the younger families, but we also have a large population of elderly individuals that still need support and help. And so we want them to remain a part of our community, remain an active part of our community. And we can do that by continuing to develop and program for the elderly population. So there's those two things. And then overall, we have to continue to develop the community itself. That's as we discussed on Main Street. Um, if I know that there was discussion in regards to a hotel across from Joe's uh from Alexander um prior to COVID, that kind of gets stopped by the pandemic. And so if we continue to build upon these uh these development projects and provide these amenities to the community, I think we'll keep Bexley a desirable place to live. Again, I think that's the greatest challenge, is keeping it a desirable place, not only for us, but for the for the future generations as well. Thank you.
I would say that the the greatest challenge Bexley is currently facing is the greatest challenge that many places are currently facing, and that's how to live with COVID. Um, you know, it has changed all of our lives. We can all, we can all literally feel it right now affecting our lives. Um, and so as as a city, we need to continue providing support, especially to our elderly members of the community or those who are, you know, compromised. I think offering meetings like this and city council meetings in the foreseeable future that are available online, we assume, or another video platform would be the ideal. And I think we need to keep um these things in place, even for a considerable time after COVID because there's still going to be some lingering fear of people who just don't quite feel comfortable going out publicly living their lives where they live. So COVID, I I think it is our greatest challenge, and we have to to define the businesses connected that are um potentially being able to be affected by that. Um, and so I I do believe that we're all experienced.
Please, the library closes in fifteen minutes. Please check out all libraries here before I do. Thank you.
If anyone has a book, you know, it's time. I don't think I can leave on that, so.
Bexley's greatest challenge is is staying relevant and making sure that we are financially sound moving into the future. The development of innovative policies, programs, services, and infrastructure are essential if communities want to attract strong businesses and diverse residents. Continuously out and about in our community and always available, you know, I have steady contact with constituents. There is never an end to the insightful ways in which caring residents believe that their wonderful city can be developed. Which ideas to implement, which ideas to put on the back burner for another year is a continuous budgetary quadrant. Being a good steward of the city's finances is arguably the most important duty of Bexley city council member. Having a solid working relationship with the administration and auditor is imperative when assessing the feasibility of the latest community resource. Prioritizing new projects and being certain that our city cannot only afford the project today is only step one. The step that is even more important is questioning whether Bexley can find and naturally sustain the project into the future. Strategic planning, prioritizing, and saving are essential to any city that wants to be relevant and prosper far into the future.
I think Bexley has four um current challenges that I would prioritize. The first is, Adam mentioned, is COVID. Uh, we we need to get through this pandemic. I know that we are all over these masks, we're over the conditions, and we are all over the pandemic, but it's still with us and unfortunately, still going to be around with us for the next few months. The second priority is to modernize and update our aging infrastructure. Back in March and May of twenty twenty, we had two once in a year, uh once-in-a-century-year-old floods, two, one right after the other, and many of our residents lost precious memories from their basements as sewage came up into their basements. As a city council member, I was able to vote on important legislation regarding inflow and infiltration um so that I could help financially assist residents who wanted to upgrade their infrastructures and their own homes. The third great challenge is actually happening on Livingston at the moment. All you have to do is look on the news and you will see cars, cars flipping into the front yards of your neighbor's houses. There is a second public meeting uh as part of the joint Livingston Avenue project that's going to take place on October thirteenth at six-thirty at Christ the King. I am one of the exesecicial members of the steering committee, which means I don't vote, but I get to ask questions and have some influence. And I have repeatedly asked them to not only propose long-term fixes, but also short-term fixes so that our residents are safe. The void priority is uniting our community. There's so many good things we're doing, but sometimes we're doing them separately, and we need to come together as a community. And I hope that can help us get there.
Thank you very much. As everyone has heard, the library will be closing in a few minutes. So this brings us to our final question of the evening. Uh, each person brings unique skills, talents, and perspective to an elected role they serve in, they serve in. What can you bring to the role of Bexley city council that voters should be considering? And we will start with Adam.
Yes, I I really would like to go back to my my graduate work at Young University. I studied religious history in late antiquity, and that was a wonderful experience. And it taught me how to better evaluate arguments, but also to give my opponents the benefit of the doubt in every situation. Whether, even if you think you're going to disagree strongly with someone, you need to assume that their argument is in its strongest form, in its best form. Because at the end of the day, that's not only, you know, good for you, it's good for everyone, it's good for the city to have the best ideas uh put forward. And I really believe that my my training there um has really helped my mindset and will enable me to evaluate ideas, to disagree civilly, but with with passion um and 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 to really offer a unique voice on Bexley city council. Uh, I I would consider myself a classical liberal, and I know that there aren't really a lot of us in Bexley. Um, but you know, I I I think that our voices need to be heard, and I'm willing to 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 say what what I believe needs to be said, and I'm going to do it in a manner that is respectful of everyone else, so.
My leadership style is one of commitment, collaboration, and compromise. I have always thought opportunities to work with others to make a difference in the world around me. Whether chairing a nonprofit board like Move to Prosper, organizing a large community events like the main event, or serving as a two-term president of Bexley city council, I have learned that most positive progress happens when leaders model diligent action coupled by genuine concern for those they serve. I am passionate about serving everyone in my commu- community, and my presence on the community speaks to my willingness to listen to and work hard for those I represent. The community that I have been honored to serve the past eight years recognizes and values the work that I do. My greatest skill is that of a community builder who listens to the concerns of individuals, strategizing positive ways of improving our city while honoring the best of our community's traditions is what I bring to Bexley and what is valued by Bexley citizens.
The skills that I have brought to Bexley city council for the past four years and hopefully four more if I'm re-elected are those of a lawyer, a teacher, and as an advocate. As a lawyer, I am skilled at being objective, finding the facts, considering different perspectives, and also drafting well-reasoned and well-intentioned legislation. It's important to me that when I'm drafting legislation, that I've considered different input. And as part of that, one of the other things that I bring as a city council member is being able to advocate my position to your fellow council members. If I can't convince three other council members to vote with me, that legislation doesn't pass. So I also need to be a consensus builder and a collaborator. And I like to see the potential in all my city councils.
May I have your attention, please? The library closes in five minutes. Please check on all materials before I leave the building. Thank you.
Five, five more minutes, but two. And the last rule is that is that of a teacher and a university professor. I have loved working with our generations to help them see the potential and to reach the maximum of abilities. I listen more than I talk. I do talk to our residents with the intent to understand and empathize rather than to respond. A wise person once told me that the quickest solutions are not always the best ones. The best solutions are those that have been fought out carefully. And I believe that I am one of those council members that does my homework so that I can serve all of you to the best of my abilities.
My job every day as an attorney is to listen to my clients' issues and help them find solutions. That not only requires me to listen to the problems that they have, but also foresee any roadblocks that we may have on the other side. I mean, understanding the other side's perspective. Uh, my my my, one of my biggest strengths is that I'm a consensus builder. I like to hear from as many parties as I can before I make a decision on how to act. Um, and that just gives me the best insight before I do take that action. You know, I'm a leader. I my 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 background shows you that. I've been a member of the Charter Review Commission. I was the youngest member of the Charter Review Commission. Um, I am uh the current Bexley city complaint liaison, uh the first time they've had this role when I was appointed by the mayor. Uh, I've served on numerous boards and I've taken these roles very seriously uh to try and make sure that I have the best background to continue to lead. I lead by listening, um and and never has that been more important for this community. Uh, I'm going to bring a diverse perspective to city council, um and and you know, it's it's going to be something that's well, um, you know, it's much needed, I think, on council at this stage. Bringing this unique perspective, I believe I would be the first African-American elected to the city council in Bexley, um also bringing the background of leadership, um as well as just the ability to listen and communicate with the public is going to help drive Bexley forward and accomplish the three goals that I told you about at the very beginning in regards to communication, community, and creation. And so I hope you will support me on election day so I can help, again, drive Bexley forward.
Well, thank you, from there. So I just want to take this time from there. First of all, thank our four candidates in there. Please take a look at their slides.